This time I'd like to call the March 3, 2025 City of Vandelia Council Meeting Order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes and the council meeting minutes of January 21st. Are there any comments or corrections? Being done, they stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards, nor do we have a public hearing. And we'll note that if you are here to speak on the Addison properties, that will be later in the agenda, so I would ask that you would please wait till then for your comments. That brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, we would like to hear what you have to say. So we'd like to ask those to, that want to speak, to follow the etiquette of communication with respect to others. As a courtesy, please try to stay on topic with your statements. And as a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments. In an effort to give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. So please hold any comments on the Addison properties until the agenda item number 12, as we will be having a public hearing at that time and we'll be taking action on that matter. So if anyone would like to make comments on any other matters, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and your comment.
Good evening, council. My name is Amos Nip. I live at 207 James Wahanan Drive, Apartment 2. I've got a couple of things I want to talk about tonight, and neither of them are the development. It seems like all of Vandelia showed up to talk about that for me. First of all, I'd like to talk about snow. Over the past couple of months, we've gotten a lot of snow in Vandelia, and the road crews have done a fantastic job handling it. I've been very, very impressed. But I think there are a couple of areas where we can still improve. Three, to be exact, crosswalks, sidewalks, and bus stops. The ADA recommends hard plastic tactile pads be placed at the entrances of sidewalks to assist the visually impaired while they're walking with their sight sticks. On a couple of occasions, I've noticed that snowplow trucks cover these up entirely or stack snow in front of them, which make them inaccessible and not usable. Secondly, sidewalks are often also just not cleared at all. I understand that this responsibility is, for the most part, placed upon the business owners who are closest proximity to these sidewalks. However, there's still city infrastructure, and they need to be maintained, just as any road would. My last item is bus stops. Snow is plowed and placed in front of RTA bus stops, which, when you combine that with the crosswalks and the sidewalks being poorly maintained, people who do not have a car are just at a complete disadvantage when it comes to commuting inside of the city. And I think that's a spot we can really improve. Finally, I haven't witnessed this myself, but another citizen informed me that he saw snow being piled up in front of school bus stops, which obviously, those aren't marked with giant placards like RTA bus stops are. So I understand that it might be a little bit harder to notice those. So perhaps if we could get some sort of a map given to drivers so they could be more aware of where these are, that would be great. I have a second thing I'd like to talk about, which is council administration and scheduling. I think that the times of study sessions and city council meetings need to be consistent and should never change unless it's the most strenuous of circumstances. If a study session is expected to go long, that discussion should be continued at a future session. However, I think that we should just be structuring our agendas with enough content to fill the one hour mark and nothing more. Citizens of Vandelia have a right to attend their government public meetings. The current set schedule of six o'clock study session and a seven o'clock meeting perfectly allows for most people living by a conventional work-life schedule of nine to five to attend and participate. I think that time changes and reschedules, I think that they can help foster distrust from the public towards the government. And I also would like to state that when these changes happen, if somebody is to go to the city council website, it's not shown there. It'll still say, "Study Session at 6:00, City Council at 7:00." In order to find the time change, you have to go to the news section of the website, which I would not have known if Amber didn't tell me. But yeah, if anybody wanted to come to a city council meeting or a study session on a night where it's been rescheduled, and they go to the city council webpage, they will not find that the time has been changed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Good evening. I'm Dan Hicks. I live at 534 Raider Drive. I've only lived in Vandelia for the past nine years, so I wasn't quite familiar with some of the regulations and the zoning process that we have. But I finally convinced my wife to get solar panels after we had three over $600 electric bills this past summer. So looking at the forecast from the energy, excuse me, after just doing some quick searches, it looks like there's potentially another 29% hike in generation charges from the summer of '25 to the summer of '26. This isn't also a consideration of other energy industrial demands, such as AI plants, the big plant going over Columbus, Ohio. So I don't see energy prices not doubling within the next five to seven years for households. So something that I would consider, or I have considered, and when I caught up zoning, I found out that we are not permitted to have solar panels on the roof facing the roadway, which my house happens to face towards the south, and I wouldn't be able to put solar panels in the most efficient locations, nor are we allowed to have ground arrays. I've had solar panels before I came here in the last decade. It's a six-year payback. It's less of a strain on the utilities. It's less of a strain on everyone's pocketbook that actually does have the money to invest in that initial investment. And I think that overall, it does show investment and improves home qualities within the region and the city. So it's something that I would like to see revisited by the council. Maybe, you know, look at exemptions for this, or potentially a rewriting of that zoning. I believe it's these types of investments that help improve the community, and also helps improve our self-reliance and the reliance that we have on each other. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. And I know we've had multiple discussions around this topic over the years, and I think we will all agree that energy costs are going to continue to rise or not going to come down. So this may be something that we revisit further in the future, just to see if we're on the right track.
Excellent. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Going once. Alright, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report, where we have a couple of information items. Mr. Cron.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that this Saturday, March 8, will be Vandelia's first large item drop-off for city residents at our Public Works Facility down on Clubhouse Way. That will take place from 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM. You will have to have a proof of residency when you come to drop off your items, and this will be the first one of this year. And this service does continue from March until October on the second Saturday of each month at those times from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the second thing is just a reminder of daylight savings time this weekend. To remember on Sunday, March 9, to be sure to set your clocks ahead one hour.
Alright, thank you. We have no old business, and we do have one resolution this evening, that being Resolution 25-R-15. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution authorizing the city council to elect two members to serve on the City of Vandelia Volunteer Firefighter Dependence Fund Board and establishing an annual election procedure.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Cron?
Yes, the Ohio Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund is a fund that helps support the families of volunteer firefighters who die or become disabled in line of duty. The fund is established in the Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 146. The Vandelia Division of Fire, in accordance with ORC Chapter 146, must elect a Vandelia Volunteer Fire Department Fund Review Board annually. The ordinance proposed outlines how the board will be elected. This is a process that we'll have to do annually moving forward. And that is something that will have to take place tonight, to nominate members for the board.
Alright, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 25-R-15 with Vice Mayor Blakesley and Council Member Avalotus Weaver to serve as the second.
Alright, I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 25-R-15, electing Vice Mayor Blakesley and Councilwoman Amber Weaver Avalotus to be our representatives. Are there any comments from council? Call to roll?
Oh, just hope that we never have to meet in this, on this board.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, the motion passes 7-0. We have no ordinances in the first reading. However, we do have one ordinance in the second reading. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and associated zoning map change for land generally located at 7848 South Brown School Road.
Alright, thank you. And since this is an ordinance in a second reading, we are required to have a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to ask that if anyone intends to speak tonight on this topic, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Alright, anyone else going to speak on this tonight? Alright, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give tonight will be true and accurate? Please say, "I do." Thank you. Alright, you may be seated. And as a reminder, when you speak, please follow the etiquette of communicating with, or with respect to others. Please stay on topic with your statements. And as a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments. In an effort to give all citizens the opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible. So in order to proceed in an organized fashion, what we're going to do first is we're going to ask staff to introduce this matter, then I'll ask the applicant to provide any additional information, after which I'll open the public hearing for anyone's comments. And then finally, I will give the applicant an opportunity to respond with their comments. So at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Rob Cron introduce the topic.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Addison Properties, has requested the creation of a planned unit development district and the approval of a preliminary plan for the Riverdale subdivision. The proposed PUD involves three parcels totaling 84.8 acres, currently located in the agricultural district. The parcels are located at 7848 South Brown School Road. On January 14, 2025, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 1 to recommend approval of the creation of the PUD district. The Planning Commission also voted 3 to 1 to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plan for the development.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to make any comments if they like.
No comments, Your Honor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? And if so, please come to the podium, state your name clearly for the record, and your comment.
Hello, my name is Donald Engel, and I live at 859 Bolton Abbey Lane in the Foxfire subdivision. As I mentioned two weeks ago, the city motto is Vandelia, Ohio, Small City, Big Opportunity. Vandelia, a city with a reputation, expectations, and higher quality standards, with better schools and less crime than some of our surrounding areas such as Dayton, Northridge, and Huber Heights. Foxfire is a beautiful brick subdivision with a variety of housing sizes and styles, with RSF2 zoning, allowing for nice green space between the houses and reasonable road widths, allowing on-street parking without major impedance of oncoming traffic, delivery trucks, and emergency vehicles. Foxfire is located immediately across South Brown School Road from the proposed housing development, currently under consideration, that will likely include mostly look-alike houses with vinyl siding and a plat-type development, with small RSF4 zoning and narrow streets. Foxfire is an upscale housing community, a subdivision, not a plat, an asset to the city of Vandelia. The city of Vandelia has numerous housing options, which are good, and are fortunate to have an upscale housing community like Foxfire within the city. When I drive up the hill on Brown School Road from Little York, to me, it represents a beautiful first impression of entering the city of Vandelia. At least that is the way it was for me 27 years ago, when I saw the beautiful Foxfire subdivision at the top of the hill on the left, and looking to the right was farmland as currently exists today. At that time, 27 years ago, I decided I wanted to move from Huber Heights to Vandelia, met with Bill Willoughby and McGovern Willoughby Homes, and purchased and had my house built in Foxfire within the city of Vandelia. Prior to that time, I didn't have any thought or desire to even consider moving to Vandelia. It was Foxfire, the lot sizes, quality features, and rural-type environment that drew me to Vandelia. I remember Bill Willoughby mentioning the area across Brown School Road as a future extension of McGovern Willoughby Homes, once the current area was built out. Sadly, Bill Willoughby passed away in 2020, and so did his continued vision for Foxfire. Huber Heights had new developments that I looked at and had considered. However, they were mostly vinyl plat houses on small lots with narrow streets, like what is proposed by the developer of the property you will be voting on tonight. Foxfire community includes RSF2 zoning with 1/3 acre lots, minimum 1,500 square-foot single-story homes or 2,000 square-foot multi-story homes exclusive of porches, basements, and garages, wider road widths that can accommodate on-street parking without severely impeding traffic, particularly emergency vehicles, snowplows, snow cleaners, street cleaners, and delivery trucks, combination houses with two- and three-car garages, mostly brick exteriors, desirable green space between the houses, no chain-linked fences. Although the majority in attendance tonight would prefer the land being discussed to remain rural farmland, we realize this land will ultimately be improved, and we are not against single-family housing. What we are against is the proposed vinyl single-family and rental housing on small lots with narrow streets. With limited land across Brown School Road, we only have one chance to construct another high-quality, upscale housing community in this area, which would supplement and complement the Foxfire area of the city, my first impression when I decided to move to Vandelia. The proposed vinyl plat housing could be constructed anywhere and would appear to be better suited for an area near Redwood Housing Development. The first phase is a Foxfire about 30 years old and still looked fantastic. I have lived in my home for 27 years, and my house and the surrounding houses are well-maintained and still look new. I'm not sure we will be able to say the same about vinyl-sided houses even after 10 years if these are approved. The Foxfire subdivision, now being 30 years old and is still fully, is still not fully built out. For 30-plus years, there has been an option within the city of Vandelia for people to build within Foxfire, as it has maintained a slow but steady growth throughout the years, offering quality housing options to those looking to live in a nice upscale housing community within the city. I read in the Dayton Daily News, the developers plan to fully build out the proposed vinyl housing plat within five years. I personally would prefer another Foxfire with gradual yearly growth that can give homeowners an option of building in this area for many years to come. Gradual growth would also likely be easier on city and school services. Vandelia, Ohio, Small City, Big Opportunities. We only have one opportunity to require any housing development in this area to follow the highly successful quality and features, lot sizes, and street widths that were included in the first phases of Foxfire. Please don't miss this opportunity. The majority and I in attendance this evening ask you to vote "no" on the proposed vinyl housing on small RSF4 development proposal. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Next speaker? Come on, there was more people that raised their hand.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Bresch. I live at 898 Deerhurst, here in Vandelia and Foxfire. I'm the fir-, my husband and I are the first house on the south side of Deerhurst. This greatly affects the homes around us. First, I'd like to say amen to everything he said. The one thing, and I've said it several times, and I put it in an email, and as we look at the plans, and we, I think we all know, something is going to happen sooner or later. Please, 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 do not let Deerhurst cross Brown School and go straight through. At the top of the hill, you're going to have all this traffic coming out at one time. We can't have a light at the top of the hill. We can't have a, we already have a light at the bottom. That's enough. But it is just accidents waiting for happening to add more traffic as if Deerhurst goes straight through. And again, please consider keeping our area like Foxfire and keeping it very nice. I will say, when my husband and I were looking to move from Forest Ridge at the time, over here, we picked Foxfire because they were beautiful, constructed homes. Bill Willoughby did a fantastic job. And our home is as good as the day it was built. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Russell Months, and I live at 825 Deerhurst Drive in Vandelia. I too am a Huber Heights escapee of the madness over there with narrow streets and cars parked on both sides of the road. And now I enjoy driving down the street. My biggest concern with the project, and I understand that it will probably be developed, is the traffic and the danger that we put our citizens in without changing the traffic pattern on Brown School. There's just no way to take 1,000 more cars and put them in the development. We're getting, we're going to have, what, another 200 coming out of Foxfire soon. And then you're going to have 300, 400 coming out of Riverdale, if that's what it ends up being called. And it's going to be a mess there. It's a bottleneck. It's right at the bottleneck of Little York and Brown School. And the sightline for turning north out of the, the, our subdivision is not that, as fast as they drive coming up the hill, you got, you got to get on it to get out. And even when you thought you were open traffic, open, there was no traffic. And the other thing I'd like to address here is, in their letter of justification to the city, in the paragraph 3, "The enhancement of corridors, connectivity between neighborhoods and parks, and the preservation of green space are all components of the proposed plan when combined with surrounding neighborhoods." There's no connectivity to anything in Vandelia. It's not connected to a park. You would, there's no park you could walk to from that, from this proposed development. There's no business you could walk to because of the roads and the area that it's in. It's a, maybe 3/4 of a mile to Little York Tavern, but you can't walk it. You can't walk to get there. There's no connectivity. It's just going to be a bunch of vinyl houses on what was agriculture land and more traffic. And I really don't believe that Vandelia needs to put its residents at risk for this housing development. Thank you.
I think I'm in the minority here tonight, but that's okay. I've been there before. My name is Larry Taylor. I don't think, I don't need to introduce myself to a lot of you. Vandelia, you know how important Vandelia is to me. I've made my living here. I've owned a business here for 50 years. I reared my children here, and I want sincerely, my only motivation is what's good for Vandelia, because I care about Vandelia. I still live here, intend on living here the rest of my life, and having a business here as long as I live. Vandelia, right now, seems a little dormant to me. We lost our bank, Fifth Third Bank. Not enough foot traffic, not enough business down there, not enough transactions. That's why they closed the bank. We've lost two out of our three drugstores. We've got empty businesses all over town. Restaurants, I think we got one restaurant we can go in and sit down and have a waiter or waitress. Our schools, 15 years ago, our enrollment was 4,500 children. Today, it's 3,200. That's not good. That's not healthy. That's teaching jobs, that, you know, when you're going, we're diminishing as a, as a community. And we need growth. You know, I drive around a lot, and I grew up in Tip City, Troy. There's just new housing projects everywhere. And here Vandelia, how many houses have we had built in this town in the last 20, 30 years? Not very many. And we need the growth. I'm a business. I'm pro-business. You know, I'm, I'm all about growth. You know, that traffic, I don't, you know, I don't go that way a lot. I don't see, I mean, we're going to widen the streets. And the whole connotation of, of these are cheap houses, these are $400,000, $500,000 houses, are they not? And are they, the way, they're good people. I mean, I, they're my neighbors. We're all friends here. But these are not just junk houses going up, as I understand it. I don't want junk houses either, but I understand that these are not. But Vandelia needs some growth. We need a shot in the arm. We are dormant. I sit on the Vandelia Development Corporation and, for years, and we used to have meetings and people, companies wanting to come here all the time where we'd give some seed money. Rob, I don't think we've had a meeting in six months, have we? We're just not getting, we're not getting the growth. And as a business owner, it's not good for me. It's not, it's not healthy for the community. And I'm for, I'm for business, for pro-business. Thanks for listening to me. I still love you all.
Alright, thank you.
We're not against housing in Vandelia. We just think this is, this is Donald Engel, 859 Bolton Abbey Lane. Donald Engel, 859 Bolton Abbey Lane. We're not against housing in Vandelia. We think housing is great in Vandelia. It's the type of housing in this particular location. If they were to move over toward the Redwood Development, I don't think we would have this issue. Thank you.
All right, sir.
Hello. Gloria Shanahan, 7733 South Brown School Road. I thought this was a good time to speak. I don't really have a whole lot to say, but I will beg to differ about the quality of this housing. I don't know if any of you have taken any drives through Brookville, Union, and today I was at the woods at Beaver Creek. There are differences, and there are options, I think, with this development, if it were to go through, of things that could be asked for. I was not impressed at all in Union. I was not at all impressed in Brookville. These are vinyl plat homes, very close together, very narrow streets, lots of cars. I feel it would be a detriment to that part of Vandelia. It is known to be agricultural. Some of the more rural areas of Vandelia, we don't have much of that left. I was surprised, pleasantly surprised, today when I drove out to Beaver Creek, to the woods. There seems to be a more aesthetic effort there with different materials on the front, since scalloped siding. since scalloped siding, lots of different options compared to what I saw on the panels here early on when they were showing what they might look like, which was all pretty much the same, cookie cutter. I'm not against growth in Vandelia, but I agree, that part of Vandelia is not suited for many reasons, for a huge plat. Traffic is going to be a problem. I pull out of my driveway every day, morning and afternoon, we're gonna have accidents. As a matter of fact, I don't know if any of you remember, but we had an accident of somebody pulling out, Foxfire Trail, didn't see a car coming up the-- a truck coming up the hill, plowed right through one of our big rows of beautiful trees. Took it out, and they had to mechanically get the guy out of his truck just from hitting one of our trees. They're not that huge of trees. Lady didn't see him coming up the hill. We're gonna have a lot of problems with traffic. And I do worry about emergency services. I know they say it's gonna be okay. I beg to differ after driving through Brookville and Union. You guys have an opportunity to command or demand some changes. I don't-- I'm not against growth. I think it'd be a great area for some houses. Let's spread them out. Let's make them look nice. And I disagree with Larry Taylor's comment about Vandelia's being dormant and the reason it's dormant. We don't have a lot to draw people here to buy houses because our downtown doesn't have that much to offer. I think some efforts need to be placed in some other things, maybe some more nice nature parks, trails, and some family restaurants. I agree. We only have like one restaurant where we can sit down. So if you wanna draw people, like Tip and Troy, we need to make some other changes, I think. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Ed Burke, 2337 Upper Trent. I'll leave the housing quality alone. We beat that to death. I'll leave the housing quality alone. We beat that to death. I'm more hung up on the width of these streets. That's not a good view. If you could pull up the view showing the beginning of Foxfire, you'll see the comparison of the width of what's currently in Foxfire compared to the width. So the entry there is the same. You go on down into the new proposed subdivision, it gets skinny, real skinny. And if you look at the very long cul-de-sac all the way to the north, that's all skinny, and that's the longest cul-de-sac. So how's delivery trucks gonna manage that? Cars parked on both sides. I don't think this layout has been thought through. In the event of a fire, a first responder shows up, the ambulance shows up, the fire truck shows up, how does the ambulance get out of the cul-de-sac?
Well, if I don't mind, Chief Fala, can you speak to that? Do you have any concerns with this type of development and the layout and the size of those roads?
The initial information we have is the roads are widened up, except the ladder truck, which is what we use to determine all those lengths and turnarounds.
Okay, if there's cars parked on both sides, it doesn't matter? You feel fine?
Yeah, because the ladder truck's the largest piece of apparatus we have to maneuver. So that ladder truck's what they use as a layover. And I'm fairly certain we've done that with the preliminary plan. I think that would be the Fire Marshal's purview, but he's the one that does that review. But I know that we have talked about this at length with our D E S and zoning and the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Also, with e-commerce, delivery trucks, that cul-- the bottom of the cul-de-sac will be a holding pen waiting for another truck to come in. It just doesn't seem like a high quality of life living on that street. You have the mailbox cluster, so if you live at the bottom, you drive your car up there, you turn around in somebody's driveway, get your mail, come back down. I don't think that's a-- it's not a good plan. I'm not opposed to building homes. You could build the homes that are proposed. I don't like the cul-de-sacs. They're beyond what the city allows. I think the city should at least enforce what's on the books and limit the amount of cul-de-sacs. There's too many cul-de-sacs, in my opinion.
Telephone.
The other issue I have is the lead contamination. It's been an issue in the past. I've worked for three businesses that have been burnt by the EPA. One dates back to World War I, McCook Field. They buried oil tanks and gas tanks in the ground. The current employer owned the property. They were responsible for the cleanup. It's happened three employers I've worked for, different places, and they all were burnt. So I think someone should look at the-- to ensure there's no lead in the ground. Schools, I drove by Smith Middle School. There's still trailers out there. My daughter went there 2010. She spent a year in one of those trailers. They're still there. So do we-- I question if we have the capacity for these kids. Beaver Creek City Schools are trying to pass a $750 million levy for a new high school. Are we getting into that situation? That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Tanya Brown, 4428 Poplar Creek Road. With reference to the cul-de-sac that Ed was talking about, I noticed some puzzled looks. The code, which I don't have in front of me, these violate the code that's currently on the books as far as length. Several of these cul-de-sacs do. I think that's what Ed was referring to. I don't have the actual numbers. Oh.
600 is on the box, and those are the two.
Okay, 600 feet is what is in the code, and these cul-de-sacs too. The may-- the big one here that's kind of separate from the rest of the subdivision is 737 feet, and the other one is 683 feet. So those are both beyond, which I think we brought up early on in all this discussion months ago. Now, there was a letter that someone said it was okay. I don't know if you can just have a letter that says it's okay, or if it has to go through some sort of channels to change the code or to modify that for this subdivision, but that was, I think, what initiated Ed's concern about the cul-de-sacs. I did notice as well, in the comprehensive plan, it commented about cul-de-sacs, not recommending cul-de-sacs. And then we have a subdivision full of nothing but cul-de-sacs and the lack of connectivity when you do that. And I thought that was kind of interesting. But another thing I wanted to bring up, I know traffic has been a concern for so many people, and I don't know if it's falling on deaf ears or if it matters. I don't know. But one thing that occurred to me, by reducing the number of lots, by making the lots larger, you reduce traffic. So by having fewer homes, you're gonna have less traffic, which may help. I thought about the subdivisions there off of Stone Quarry. You have three newer subdivisions off Stone Quarry. So today I drove down there thinking to myself, now how does this compare? It's a two-lane road, Stone Quarry. How does that compare to Brown School? And one thing I noticed is there is a turn lane all the way down Brown-- all the way down Stone Quarry. So anyone that lives off of Stone Quarry in a single family, one of the properties that has land, has a nice little turn lane. They can pull off, they can wait, and they can turn all the way down Stone Quarry Road. Any of the subdivisions, there's a little turn lane. You can just kind of pull out of traffic and-- well, you don't have that on Brown School. We don't even have shoulders on Brown School. We have feet from the roadway to the light poles, and I've brought this up before. Brown School Road is not a road that can handle this much additional traffic. It just can't, and there is nothing that can be done. Who's gonna widen Brown School Road to give us turn lanes like Stone Quarry has? This part of town cannot handle the density that this subdivision is asking for. This kind of density could be handled maybe up off of Stone Quarry, where you can walk to the rec center, where you can walk to the amenities, you can ride your bike. This is-- this is a subdivision out in the middle of no man's land, in a way. You can't walk to anything. The parks, nothing. And, you know, I looked at the comprehensive plan. I know that's so important in this decision. And it has one of the lowest ratings for connectivity to the city. So you're gonna put 167 houses stacked one on top of the other. It just makes no sense to me. There are other places in Vandelia that could accommodate this type of housing so much more gracefully than this area. And again, I have no objection to having quality housing, but it needs to reflect the quality of Vandelia. These people, how many of these people have said to you that they moved from other communities to Vandelia? And there's a reason for that. It's because of the quality of home that they found here. We don't want the kind of housing that they left. It's just gonna, in my opinion, it's going to affect the integrity of all of Vandelia if you start having this kind of housing here. And another thing I just wanted to bring up, I heard, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I heard that there was something about lead contamination. And I don't know if that has been discussed within anybody, or if there's been questions answered about this lead thing, but I just thought that I would ask that question, see if there's been conversation about that. So I promised I would bring that up. And again, the comprehensive plan, natural, it did call for natural facades, natural sidings, natural exterior treatment. And this vinyl is gonna be a mess. I'll just leave it at that. So thank you very much for your time.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Hammons to speak on the cul-de-sac issue that you were referencing, because I think that would be helpful for all of us.
Yes. In general terms, when you look at creating a cul-de-sac, it's supposed to have a length less than 600 feet. The idea being that you're easily able to get to and from properties along that cul-de-sac for emergency access, for access in general, and for other reasons. It also limits the amount of distance that utilities would have to run in the event of, you know, hydrants, things like that. Within a certain range of that 600-foot distance, if the contours of the property or other unique circumstances warrant, a slightly longer cul-de-sac is permitted by the code, particularly in the instance of a planned unit development. One of the aspects of a planned unit development is that it is its own district. So the length of the cul-de-sac is approved by approving a preliminary plan that allows for a cul-de-sac of that length. Now, if the cul-de-sac length were problematic on its own, like if they were proposing 1,500 feet or some ridiculous number, or if the fire service had objections based on the design of that longer cul-de-sac, or if they were proposing a cul-de-sac that could very easily be cut into by a cross street to provide improved access, then that's not something that we would recommend approval of or that council would see fit to approve. But in this case, because they are within 10% to 15% of that 600-foot rule, and because they are designed with the adequate radiuses at the ends to allow for emergency access with the ladder truck and other apparatus, and because of the contours of the site, the increased cul-de-sac length is approvable. If they were going longer, if they were, if there were other considerations, maybe that wouldn't be the case. But in this case, based on fire department's assessment, based on our engineering assessment, based on the criteria that's in the zoning code, we're comfortable with the cul-de-sac length. They've done everything they need to do to make those cul-de-sacs work.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
Is that exception to the code in actually in, written in the code?
It is written in the structure of the planning unit development that allows for standards like that 600-foot rule or like, for example, the lot frontage and whatnot. Those standards can be adjusted as part of the planning unit development process. That's essentially what, with an approval tonight, that's what council would be doing is adjusting that requirement to suit this proposal and this development.
I see. Thank you.
I might add one thing on the cul-de-sac length. That is, that standard predates Mike, so I know, and he was here. So it's been in there for a very long time, and it's in there for a reason, to let us have that control. One thing that has changed since the original adoption of the 600-foot length is we have increased the minimum radius size of the actual ball of the cul-de-sac so that the fire apparatus and our, you know, snowplows and that have more room to operate. So while the length hasn't changed, we have increased the minimum standard for the size of the cul-de-sac for those vehicles to be able to get around.
All right, thank you. That makes sense.
And we, this does have a designated turn lane, right? Doesn't it have a designated turn lane?
Tanya Brown, just to clarify, this is the same plan that was brought to us as an R4, not as a PUD. So to say that it's kind of, it's interesting that he says you now have the ability as a PUD to accept the extra length, you know, because that's within your authority. But they already planned it that way when it was an R4. You follow me? Yeah. So that's kind of, I don't know, a little misleading to me. Also, I wanted to ask, is there adequate access to all of the green space from all these cul-de-sacs for machinery, equipment to get through if things need to be, if there's trees down, or if there's a blockage of a drain tile, you know, anything? I just don't know how, when I look at this, I'm just curious, how would equipment get to all of the undeveloped, unimproved land there? Do you see access? Maybe there is? I don't know. Just, when I looked at the plan, I didn't see it was real accessible from those cul-de-sacs.
It does look like there's some access points at the ends of the cul-de-sacs. You'll see like a gray area. I can see the two there, that area there, and then if you go up to the other two that were, where you can see, those are access areas to get to the green space that are not part of the actual lots. I believe those are shown as easements. I'm not 100% sure if they've got to that detail yet, but I think they're left there to have easements for access to the green space.
All right, we have our next speaker.
Okay. Teri Manuel, 2431 Oldbury Court, Vandelia. Can't hear me? Well, I'll just yell.
Yep, speak into that microphone. Pull it to your chin and speak.
I actually live on a cul-de-sac in Foxfire, and I have a really dumb question. Why, when we had snow, did you send down a little pickup truck with a snowplow on it? Because the big snowplow couldn't get down my cul-de-sac. I'd also like to know why you always cover up the fire hydrant that's on my street. I mean, it's like, you have a cul-de-sac here. You cover up my fire hydrant that sits on my street every time, and it's always the snowplow. Snow, plow, fire hydrant, gone. Okay? I live with it every single time it snows. I don't understand why you have to send a small one, a small pickup truck, down my street. I don't understand why you can't figure out another way to put somewhere the snow somewhere other than right in front of my house, when there's a whole nice, big, beautiful area over here where nobody parks, nobody's there, and it's just begging for snow to be dropped on it. Okay? So when you talk about your cul-de-sacs, think about mine. So, when you talk about your cul-de-sacs, think about mine.
I thought they put all the snow at my house.
Alex Conardre, 751 Foxfire. I just, a few things I have here. On this project, there are three people that are going to make money, and only one of them is a Vandelia resident. The rest of the companies, businesses, entities to make money on this are not even in the greater Dayton area, so just keep that in mind. I think most, everybody behind me will probably support me when I say this. All we're doing is asking you to do it right, listen to your stakeholders, who are us, the citizens, and do your best to incorporate all of our requests within what you can legally do and everything. We ask that you approve it in a way that, or I do, I mean, I ask you to approve this development in a way that you would want to live or buy there. So think about it that way. And also prove it in a way that future council members in 10, 15 years, when many of you probably have retired because you can do that, they won't get complaints of what you guys, the decisions you guys made, just as you guys probably catch grief for decisions your predecessors have made, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So think of it, please think of it that way as you make your decisions tonight. That's all I can ask of you. And then I know there's been some requests for some additional research to be done. We just, my request is just, please hold off approving anything until all that proper research has been done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't raise my hand earlier.
You didn't?
Am I covered?
No. Apparently, we have to do that again. Here. No, we've got a couple more we've got to do. Once I can get to it. Raise your right hand. I saw you sitting back there. You just weren't going to do it. All right, you can raise your right hand. Is there anybody else that's going to speak tonight that came in late? All right, please stand. I think the lady behind you, she had her hand up too. She... Are we sure? Are we good? All right. Repeat after me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give tonight will be true and accurate? All right, thank you. You may be seated.
Okay. My name's Rick Ford. I live at 1616 Ashworth Drive. And when we built our house in 1996, one of the requirements to build where I built was it was going to be brick and cedar. That was the combination. Well, as time went on, the economy ebbed and flowed, the restrictions were dropped, and there were no more brick, there's still brick facade, but the sides are masonite or some kind of thing. But as you walk through my neighborhood, you can see that those things are getting wavy up the sides. And you can see the siding getting wavy. And so I was a little disappointed in that. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you're in real estate. So let me ask you, if you were listing a home, and you had a 20-year-old home that was brick, or you had a 20-year-old home that was vinyl sided, which one would appreciate most over 20 years?
Obviously, the property with the natural products on it is going to hold its value better.
So that being said, I would ask you to vote no on this particular development the way it's being stated, because part of the responsibility of everybody on the council is to retain a quality of life in Vandelia and to protect property values in Vandelia. So I see that as a kind of a win-win situation for you guys. I've got some friends that moved from Vandelia to Tip City, and it's a development just south of, what's the main? It's on 25A before you get to 571. So they're downsizing, they're older, so they wanted a ranch. Well, the houses are extremely close together. So now they're trying to figure out how to plant arborvitae and things so they don't have to look in their neighbor's living room. So I think it's a kind of same situation we're talking about here. Anyway, thanks. And by the way, I'm running for council, so if anybody wants to sign my petition...
Hi, good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak, even though I showed up a little bit late tonight. I apologize for that. My name is Kristen Bell. I live at 781 Foxfire Trail. It's right before the bend to the second half of the L, so just past the second street that connects to the Deerhurst side of things. So, we moved here about two years ago, actually next month. So, and when moving here, our main criteria, we moved from Fort Wayne, Indiana, was we need great schools for my wonderful kids back there, as well as we needed yard for our three German Shepherds. And I tell you, we saw so many houses over a greater area of Dayton. Great schools, and South Vandelia has amazing schools. So, this is one of our top, but we, at one point, took our Realtor to, I think it was four or five different districts in one day, because we had to travel each day. So just finding a house with a yard was a nightmare, to find a big enough yard for, you know, three dogs. And we didn't even have a fenced yard, so we had to, you know, build a fence here in order to accommodate our pets. But we found a wonderful house here in Vandelia, and we absolutely love it. So it's great. I tell you, we gave our Realtor a run for his money touring a bunch of houses just to find a decent yard. So many houses we toured were side by side, so close. And in our backyard, there'd be backyard, 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 so many backyards. And we're like, our three dogs are going to see like 20 more dogs minimum, you know? So they just were not going to work for our family. And so yard was important to us. But when it comes to great schools, one of the reasons we chose Vandelia was the amazing ratings. I mean, excellent programs, excellent teachers. It's great. But we were a little bit disappointed after we bought the house. My five-year-old, she's already been in preschool. This is her third year preschool because she's an August baby, and you guys have an August 1st cutoff date. And we thought, well, maybe she can test in or something. She's already reading and writing. We thought that'd be an excellent way for, you know, pretty good head start to be in kindergarten this year. However, we were told that Vandelia Butler does not allow for testing early due to the fact that they don't have enough spots in kindergarten to allow that. So that's what we were told. I don't know if that's the truth, but we were told there's not enough teachers or classes to have additional students to test in, which is fine for our family. You know, she's just doing any other year preschool, it's fine. But also, my three-year-old, she's three, but she's also an August baby, so just missed the cutoff date. But she was put first on the waitlist this past year for this previous summer. She was put number one on the waitlist because she already had a sister in, but they wanted to allow people who didn't have sibling relations, who were five and about to go to kindergarten, to get that preschool year experience, which definitely makes sense. But I just want to let you guys know, she was first on the waitlist, and she never got a spot in. So that's just how much of a demand that this school district has of kids getting into that school. And we're fine, you know, she's only three. We don't need to have her in. I guess it'd be another three years of preschool due to the August 1st cutoff date thing. So we made it work, but I just wanted to let you guys know she was first on that list, never got a spot in because there's that many kids demanding to be in these great schools. So they're wonderful schools, but I don't see the availability for this many houses and this many children. So I am concerned with the amount of families that might have kids in the school district here. So I would just like to know if you do allow so many houses, how our schools would be supported in that, because they're excellent programs. But my five-year-old's reading and writing, and she's doing a third year preschool, which is fine, we don't mind, but we wish she would have had that extra challenge of being in kindergarten this year. That would have been great to allow testing in, you know, case-by-case basis, or, and there's just not enough spots for that preschool alone, which is an amazing program. So, definitely concerned with the number of houses. And then one more thing, I'm an aerospace engineer, and I go to Wright-Patt Base all the time. I work for Booze Island right next to it. So I go underneath that train bridge every time I'm going to and from work. And traffic is always a big concern. It always takes me about 25 to 30 minutes to get there, when if I travel without traffic, it'd be about 20 minutes from my house. So just a little bit of extra time getting through, and most traffic is literally right there at that light, going under that train bridge. And I've heard that we can't expand that train bridge due to it being historic. And I hate that train bridge, because we also have a... I know, I hope everyone does. We have a 15-passenger...
You're not alone.
We have a 15-passenger black van we bought a while ago that, you know, we took seats out in the back, so we have the two kids in the front, the three German Shepherds in the back, and it's great. But we don't really fit. I mean, we go for it, and I just gun it and make sure I'm in my line, and hopefully the other person doesn't go over. But that train bridge is a concern, and since I go to work, you know, not every day, but at least once a week, traffic is a big concern with me, just getting out. And it's that train bridge that just, it backs up a lot. So I hope that you guys consider how much traffic this is going to bring. And I don't mind houses either, because, you know, I bought a house here. But a big yard was important to me for my family, so that was important when I was looking for a house. So, you know, people looking for houses, are they going to want, you know, houses this close together is a big concern. So, that's all. Thank you.
Robert Shanahan, 7733 South Brown School Road. So, much has been discussed concerning the quality of the building materials being proposed, and the lot sizes, and the diversity of the architecture, but no one has brought up quality of the actual homes or the builder. According to customer reviews reported by Better Business Bureau, Yelp, TrustPilot, and Houzz, Arbor Homes earns only 2.3 out of 5 stars. Less than half the people that buy an Arbor Home are satisfied with it. Is that what we want to bring to Vandelia? This is in direct contrast with Woodland Meadows, Timberwinds, Foxfire, the Falls, et cetera. These neighborhoods rival anyone in the northern Miami Valley. And I like to keep Vandelia that way. An increase in lot size, say, to 85 to 145 maybe, similar to an Arbor Homes development in Brookville, would potentially decrease the total number of lots to around 100, but would more closely align with the lot sizes and density as in Foxfire. And requiring natural siding materials would also help to achieve a more unified look along the South Brown School corridor, much like Foxfire. If the city is really set on building 167 tract homes but with greater roadway access, how about Webster Street down by the Redwood Apartments? That's right close to the highway. Southwest corner of West National Road and Peters Pike. There's a 50-acre parcel for sale on Dogleg Road right now, completely inside the city limits that can fit 187 homes using these lot sizes. And it's right off National. As you know, excluding the I-70 overpass, South Brown School Road from Little York all the way up to Wal Smith Way, which, if you don't know, that's over a mile, that's where the Sleding Hill is, that's the exact same width as Little York between the train tunnel and Webster. Another road in Vandelia that is the exact same width is Mulberry Road between Peters Pike and Dixie. And I mention that because in February of 2022, a PUD for 87 townhouses on Mulberry Road was presented to the Planning Commission and eventually recommended for approval by a vote of four to one. In those meetings, in the first and second readings before the council in April and July, public concerns mirrored the concerns around this PUD proposed on South Brown School Road. The council agreed Mulberry Road PUD met the comprehensive plan, which people are saying this does, but they had concerns as well. Among those concerns were Mulberry Road was not adequate to carry the extra traffic. The home designs did not have sufficient architectural variety, and the exterior building materials did not unify the development and surrounding community. The motion to approve the Mulberry Road Townhouse PUD failed three to four. All four of the council members who cast a no vote are still on this council. Thank you.
Lisa Sellers, 2041 Waterfall Lane. I didn't bring a script or anything. It's right from my heart. If you allow those houses to be built on Brown School Road, that traffic is going to be an absolute nightmare. Anytime that there's an accident on 70 or 75, everything's dumped on Little York and Brown School and National. If you've come up from Miller Lane, down Little York to Brown School, 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the evenings, it's bumper to bumper. And if you add more people there, that's... There's no way with that hill on Brown School, and as narrow as that road is, that it can handle that. There will be accidents. I had a friend that got hit head-on on Brown School a couple months ago, and almost died. You know, there's nowhere to go. If somebody comes at you, there's nowhere to go, besides a tree in somebody's yard. So I just ask that you consider that changes need to be made, or don't do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sharon Hamby, 4410 Poplar Creek Road. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I had a couple kind of maybe like questions or statements. I don't understand why Redwood was like, why that isn't in the picture of opportunity for housing. It's kind of like they built that, and it doesn't, it didn't really offer much housing in the structure of that it's all like single dwelling. And there's so many like nice apartments built nowadays, like, I mean, truthfully, the ones that are in like downtown Dayton, those are really nice apartments, and they seem to be very rentable, they're desirable. Not for the location, but the niceness of the apartments. And then also, actually even in Huber Heights, when they've built new apartments, developments, they've made them multi-story, and it offers more housing. And I feel like people definitely live in those apartments. They're full. I'm like, and I feel like Redwood was an opportunity that it seems like it kind of just went like nowhere. They built a bunch of single stacked look-alike apartments. And I was like, so why weren't we looking at that as a, if we want more residents in Vandelia and we want more housing, why didn't we look at that development in the stages when it was being built? It seems like it kind of got twisted around, like maybe it was supposed to be townhomes or something. But I'm like, I just look at that, and I think it's in a better location for traffic with... I'm echoing all the concerns with traffic on Brown School, and I live that daily. And I live in the dip, the worst part of Brown School, where everybody's picking up speed coming down both sides. But I guess I just think to myself, where was like any concern or emphasis in developing Vandelia and getting more housing? What happened to Redwood? That it's kind of a, you know, I don't know, it's not much for housing that was supposed to be added to Vandelia. And I'm like, and it didn't, I don't feel like it had much opposition because it was in a good location. It doesn't interfere. Being off Webster, it's in a better traffic location for people to get to 75 versus being up on Brown School, you only have one option to get to 75 if you're going to go south. Of course, if you go north, it's still a bottleneck situation because of the narrow lanes that are narrowed all the way up through Brown School when you're going towards Vandelia. And then another kind of concern I have is when this was voted on by the Planning Commission, okay, they had photos up here, and one of the planning commissioners mentioned about how great it was that they were saving the trees on this property. These are not actual aerial shots of the property. There are not trees where these are pictured. Somebody's asking about access. There's not trees there. If you had an actual aerial photo of the property, you would see the tree lines don't fall anywhere within how they have them treed. That's imposed over top of some type of tree property, but that is not the actual land on Brown School Road that they're planning to put that development. I believe the housing will wipe out any trees that are there because of the way the property is actually laid out. And they've never presented aerial photos, actual aerial photos. And we don't know that's very available. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone is welcome to speak either for or against this matter. If you'd like to do that, please do so now.
All right, this time I'd like to give the applicant an app, uh, the, the option of making any comments, or adding anything to the, the topic.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, um, for the opportunity to be here again. Um, I, I'm really here to answer any questions if you have them. Um, I will just, uh, I don't wanna go back through the presentation. I made the presentation. Um, I'll, I'll highlight a few points that, um, I think are, are important to remember. Um, first, I, I would just like to say that, um, we go through a very rigorous process of review before we present a plan to a city. Um, this plan has been thought out, reworked many times. We've worked with our professionals, our engineers, city staff, uh, including the fire department, um, and others, to ensure that we put forward a plan that, one, works, two, meets your code, and three, that we can build. Um, and, uh, we have presented that here with this PUD. Uh, we, we meet and are planning to follow and meet all 13 of your review criteria. We have made adjustments to this plan throughout this process, including increasing the size of the lots along South Brown School Road. We've also made a commitment, uh, to Council Member Dugan, to complete a traffic impact study, uh, even though it was not required by the city and by the engineering staff. We have committed to do that, and we are also committing to the improvements that will come out of that report. We are very focused and have been focused on the comprehensive plan. Again, I'm not gonna go through each item, but we took that into consideration when we presented this to you. The low-density, less than two units or two lots per acre, providing housing with smaller lots, less maintenance, are all parts of the comprehensive plan. This is the best housing option, uh, for this property. And we, we understand, my last point, that we're not gonna make everyone happy. Um, I have, I will admit that I was going to say I'd never come in front of these meetings with someone that supports me, and so tonight may have been a first, that I had someone speak in favor. Most of the people who come out here are against what we're proposing, every city. Um, but one of, some of the points that that gentleman made are very important. Uh, we believe that growth does spur growth, and residential growth particularly spurs growth within the city. And that is the goal, I think, of all of us, and what we can all agree on, is that Vandelia does need growth, and this will provide positive growth. Again, I'm here to answer any questions. I, I'm very appreciative of the time that you all have taken in all of these meetings. Um, we've come a long way, and we're very excited about this, and, um, again, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Procedurally, I would like to ask the law director, do we close the public hearing and then have council? Okay. All right, so this time I wanna close the public hearing. Uh, so council, before entertaining a motion, do you have any questions or comments or questions that you would like to ask?
I have one. Um, have you looked at the lead contamination that some have mentioned? Um, and that would obviously go back to you. Now, I understand that you have to go through EPA testing, as well as, you know, core samples and, and that type of thing on the property. So, is this the first time you've heard of this, or you've heard of it, and how would you address that concern?
So, we, we do go through a very rigorous process that's defined by the state, the federal government, EPA, Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, we go through, we go through all of it. Um, we have completed a Phase One environmental study, which we are required to do, and it did come back with a clean report. I'm unaware of any lead contamination. Um, that was the first that I had heard of it, but, again, we, we completed our report at the end of last year.
And you'd then have to go through a Phase Two, which would also then further reveal anything that would be there on the property in the dirt?
No, we do not do a Phase Two unless a Phase One finds a reason for a Phase Two to be, uh, completed. We, we very rarely do a Phase Two unless it's a hazardous site. And again, it would pop up in a Phase One, and we would have to do it. Our lenders require it, the federal government requires it, and so in this situation, no, it's not required.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that was being addressed then. Okay.
Sure.
A few questions for you. Um, a couple, before I ask the one, few that I had prepared, um, in response to a couple residents' comments, am I correct, I mean, I know there's been issues brought up about the mailbox clusters. Um, the, my understanding is that is now a requirement by United States Postal Service. Is that not correct?
That, that is correct. I chuckle because we, we have been fighting this since the United States Postal Service required it in every development everywhere. Four lots or 400 lots, we are required to do it at their standards. So, we do the best we can to provide, um, i- in a good location, a safe location. Um, we, we put flowers and trees and, and, and parking and accessibility with, with sidewalks. So, we do the best we can, but we're required to do it.
Okay. And, um, and this may not be a question for you, but maybe Mr. Cron or staff. I mean, you had made a comment about the traffic study and agreeing to do that, even though it's not required by our code, and it's not required, we've never required it for any residential development in the city of Vandelia. Um, if, with the, with the improvements that are already proposed with the widening of Brown School for the, the length of the proposed development, um, is there a potential that that would result in a dedicated turn lane, for that stretch of Brown School from Fox, well, what would be Deerhurst, to the very northern part of the, you know, proposed road, I can't see it from here, but the, the northern cul-de-sac, that's the, the last phase, would that be a potential that that road improvement would entail the addition of a center turn lane or designated turn lanes into the developments along Brown School Road?
So, a- along where the, where the pavement is between the two subdivisions, there would definitely be room for that. There would be enough pavement for that. By the time, um, they widen their side of the road across from Foxfire, there's gonna be, I think, well over 40-foot of pavement, or, or at least 40-foot of pavement. Um, so that, that is definitely room. I mean, lanes are typically anywhere from 10 to 12 feet wide, so that would allow for three lanes for that. Um, where there could be some potential, um, for improvements outside of the frontage of their development, or on the other side, would be, as you're coming, say, um, heading south to get to the, the first cul-de-sac, or even the, the other access road, there could potentially be the need for some pavement on the, additional pavement on the west side of the road where it's not already been improved like it is in Foxfire. So, there is some potential for that if a turn lane is required, but at the two main intersections, there should be enough pavement. Like I said, we're gonna have 40-foot of pavement there, which would allow for three lanes. And, and the study, when it's done, will show if those would be warranted for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. Three, and I, I have some other general comments, but I'll come back to those after, um, some other council members I know have comments as well or questions. Um, two of the architectural standards that were part of the proposal that was recommended by Planning Commission, um, letter H, um, refers to those lots located along South Brown School Road, and it defines them as lots 31 to 35 and 119 to 126 inclusive, will be limited to a dwelling unit of 1,400 square feet and larger. Um, my question is, would the, would you as the developer, um, consider increasing that 1,400, um, amount to 2,000 square foot and higher on those 13 lots, primarily because when looking at your elevation models, the square footage, um, of 1,400 really is all of the one-story ranches, uh, with one or two exceptions. So, my concern is that the intent was that that row of housing along South Brown School was to be transitioned and, and tie better into the established Foxfire neighborhood, but if it's only the requirement of 1,400 feet, somebody could put, for example, you know, one of the Bradfords, which is a 1,600 square-foot ranch, one story, along there, uh, and I don't think that really is the intent of the transition coming over from the Foxfire neighborhood. So, is it possible that that restriction could be for those 13 houses, 13 lots that are the 80-foot wide frontage, that that threshold is 2,000 feet and higher for those 13 lots?
So, I, I think you're asking, can we make all of those two-story? Because that's really what-
Predominantly, yeah. I mean, a couple, a couple of the other ones, I mean, there are a couple two-stories that are right around 1,800 square foot and 1,900 square foot, square foot in the elevations, but the rest are all one-story ranches. That would still meet that 1,400 threshold. So, that's my concern. One of my concerns is that the potential of a one-story ranch along that road, or several one-story ranches along that road.
Yeah. Uh, council member, if you're asking us to have that as a condition of approval, I'm sure we could live with that. Um, it is, I don't have my building partner here with me. Um, you know, again, we provide options, and the options are for, for the choice of residents. Um, you know, and, and so, I hate to limit those options, but if that's something that this council would like to see, then I think we can probably make that work.
Okay, thank you. And then also, the, the letter I, which is the no two dwelling units with the same elevation and exterior color package shall be permitted on either side of each other and directly across the street for each other, or from each other. Um, to me, it's a, instead of and, it's an or, because I don't understand, I would not want three houses of the same elevation on the same side of the road, and just because they're different colors, that does not achieve the, the uniqueness of trying to break up the monotony of the, of the neighborhood. So, to me, it's as simple as changing the word and to or, that it's, you don't have the same elevation or color on the same side of the street or across from each other.
Give me a second to pull up that, uh, criteria. Thank you.
There you go.
I don't think, I think it would say the same thing, and or, and or was the same as and. Um, I didn't write this, this came from our building, from Arbor Homes, so-
Well, to me, it's, the and means both of those conditions have to be present, and I don't think that's the intent of the, it's either or. I mean, if, if I have, for example, if I have three, I'm just gonna throw out one of the names, three cottonwoods that are being built right next to each other, just because they're a different color doesn't make it, what's the term you used?
Um, sufficient architectural variety.
So, I think it needs to be color or elevation, because-
I, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, we want variety, they want variety, I know they do. So, I don't know if that's just a semantics or a mistake, but I, I don't, if, again, if that's something you'd like to see, I think we can make that work.
Okay. And my last one, before I know that Councilman Lewis has a couple things. Um, and I, I asked staff prior to tonight, because I believe it was at the study session, um, another concern was the buffering of, of landscape buffering between those rows of 13 houses on South Brown School and the roadway. Um, any of the existing trees that are along there are probably not gonna be there once the roadway is widened, so that's, those are, some of those are gonna come down, um, and they're not really mature trees to begin with. Um, so, my question is, are you open to having, um, an adequate landscape buffer along that section of Brown School, again, behind those 13 lots that parallel Brown School, um, that would comply with our, our Chapter 1232 landscape? So, whether, you know, depending on the elevations, whether that's mounding, whether that's trees, whether it's mixed of both, which would all be part of the final development proposal, but that there be some type of buffer between the, the property lines and the right-of-way on Brown School?
Happy to do that.
Okay, so that-
It, it's, we're planning on it, and so we're happy to do that.
Okay, and I thought, I thought we'd had that discussion before, but I went back and looked, like, in the Planning Commission, and it's nowhere in the notes, so that's why I'd asked staff.
I did, I do think we, we made a comment that it would be further developed during the development plan stage when we actually do landscape plans, but our intention is to do that.
Okay. And like I said before, I, I've got some comments, but I'm gonna let Mr. Lewis ask some questions on conditions, I think.
In, um, thinking through this whole process, um, and, and, uh, listening to our residents' concerns, and trying to find some middle ground, uh, to make this progress, um, I came up with several, uh, amendments to the PUD that I would, uh, offer for, uh, for consideration, um, and for really, uh, approval of the PUD concept. And one of the, uh, there's several here, but the first, that, uh, that all the homes be of a hard, you know, fired brick or stone construction, um, or, uh, concrete brick, providing it, uh, it meets the same standards for conditions as are ti- are typical of hard-fired brick. Um, stone would include natural stones, granite, uh, limestone, slate, uh, river rock, or other similar stone, uh, typically used in exterior construction. Um, such stone or brick would be mandated be used on three sides of the home, and which would include the front of the home. Um, uh, and not less than 70% of that exterior facade. So, if you have a garage door or something like that, obviously that's gonna take away from the, the requirement of the 70%. Um, and the vinyl siding is prohibited. And then the last, uh, provision of these that I had was, um, that up, and, and you have laudably, uh, agreed to, uh, go ahead with the traffic study, but that, that, let that traffic study be an independent traffic study per the code, our city code, and any requirements from the traffic study be addressed as part of the final development plan, so that those things, if something needs to be corrected or expanded, that that be completed prior to the approval, uh, of the final plan. And, uh, that, that plan would have to meet, to the extent and manner approved by the city's traffic engineer or consulting firm that, uh, we would employ, uh, for that evaluation. Um, and those were the two principal things. I know that that increases the cost of these homes, which are already fairly, uh, expensive, uh, but it is offset somewhat uh, by the, uh, exterior that you have to put up there anyway, and it also, uh, it's gonna last more than, uh, 15, 18 years. It, it's gonna have a longer life, and I would think it would create more value for the home. Um, so in that respect, I don't believe that that requirement is necessarily, um, terribly onerous, uh, to the purchaser or the seller of the home.
So, so regarding the traffic study, um, we're, we're, we've committed to doing that. Um, the, uh, on the siding request, um, we, we have considered the siding materials at great length and in discussion with our building partner. Um, we have also spent a lot of time in Foxfire, looking at the homes and the building materials that exist there. Um, we showed many examples, uh, throughout Foxfire, of homes that have some brick, a lot of brick, and no brick. We showed many homes that have all vinyl. Um, we, we are not in a position to commit to-
That's not right.
We are not in a position to commit, um, to that extent of, uh, requirement in this development. Um, it would, uh, be an extreme, um, request that we cannot frankly afford to, to do. Um, nor would it be consistent- It would be an extreme request that we cannot frankly afford to do, nor would it be consistent with Foxfire or your code. We have every intention of providing stone material on all of the homes, on a portion of them, although I did have a discussion with Arbor in anticipation of this, and one of their comments was, one of the homes is a, what they call, modern farmhouse, and you typically wouldn't put stone on that farmhouse. It would be wood. And so we can go back through the pages, I'm happy to look at them with you, to talk about the anti-monotony rules that we've committed to, to the different housing types with various uses of materials, but we would not be able to build this development if those requirements were part of the PUD.
I'm fairly set. I'm wanting to upgrade the facades of these buildings. And again, in the builders that I spoke to, with the offset, yes, it's going to be more expensive, but you're in the $15,000 to $20,000 range, particularly at the size homes that these are. And I don't feel that that raises the level of the pricing of these homes out of the market that you're attempting to tackle. And I do believe that it is more consistent with the homes, and while somewhat dated, the homes that currently exist in Van Dalia as a whole. So thus my suggestion, the wording, I'm not an engineer nor am I a builder, but I've read, I've had suggestions, and thus, that's how I articulated it. But it is important to me, at least currently here on the council floor, and I believe it's important to our community.
I'm going to speak for a second, or minute. I think I've heard from everybody that we assume at some point there'll be a development there, and that's, that's positive for us as a city. We are concerned, I hear it from everyone, and I think probably in the timeframe that we've had, this is not normally what we do per se. So we've all gone back through the code, and we've all gone back through the comprehensive plan, I'm assuming. And as a lot of documents, you can really pick out something you want to find to support your direction, so. But I think consistently through both of them, they talk about quality materials. Majority are going to say vinyl, it's not that. Hardy plank, maybe, some percentage of stone on the, on the building, those would have, suggestions would have normally been made previously to coming before us, I think. I still have an issue with the transition, multiple places in our, in both documents, transition from, between neighborhoods. So a transition between Foxfire and this new development is obligated to take place in my, in everything I read. So if, if we can't come to that agreement or designation, we're not following our own rules, as far as I see, so. Though I do want development to happen there, so I'm, I'm supportive of that. It just has to happen in one that benefits our city, so.
If I can speak then, since we're on the subject of quality of material, I know that in there, it talks about anti-monotony requirements, and I know that, you know, a lot of these has been said cookie cutter, you should not see the same across and next to each other, as we've already discussed. Along with that, then, the, it seems that vinyl is the sticky point here, and somehow vinyl is tied with quality, and quality is tied with vinyl. And I agree with fellow councilmembers here that brick, stone, and natural materials, apparently that's what's in, in there, that says, and it could even be cement board or a wood board composite. Now, I know it also says that vinyl should be a higher-grade product. Now, I know there's cheap vinyl, and I know there's higher-end vinyl that doesn't warp, doesn't, you know, it's a 20-year, 25-year guarantee. I too would like to see something a little bit more hardier, so that the perception and the look of these, now, I get it, these are $350,000 to $500,000 homes. I don't see where we're just going to slap thin vinyl on this and, you know, charge $300,000 for this. So again, I think addressing that quality of the material itself is paramount to this, to the point where, you know, it, it should blend in. Now, somehow, the, the quality of the house is tied with the size of the lot. I would say that, and I'll be making a statement later more about, you know, the market drives a lot of this. But I would agree that if there is a way to find the happy medium between maybe vinyl on the backside of that higher quality, so it doesn't ripple, the more natural cladding on the side, cement board, I put that on my house, it didn't cost that much more than, than vinyl siding. So I think there's a place for vinyl siding, and I think there's a place for natural. Now, your builder may look at that and say, okay, yeah, that's going to be an extra. How much extra, that's, I would imagine, be determined. But I really feel driven that that needs to be addressed in this. You know, so if we can, can go with that. Back to the traffic part of it, and I agree with the traffic study, not that we can require it, but I appreciate you going through that. Now, my concern is, what happens when it comes back, and does it show an impact? Does it not show an impact? If it shows an impact, what do we do with that study, and how do we go forward? Do we put that center lane in? Do we add, you know, 20 more feet to the deceleration lane? I don't know what that looks like, but I agree that that needs to be addressed because-
Prior.
Prior to the development, because that's impairment.
Before the final plan.
The final, yeah, before the final plan, I would agree. So what are your outlook on, on things that, you know, there are some things that you would be able to do, and some things would be out of your control based on, on that study. And some of that would then come back to us to say, okay, what are we going to do as a council? What can we do? You know, traffic is, is a concern there, and certainly, it's not going away. Does this really impact, you know, 400-some cars, and they're not going to be going in, and how they're, you know, at one time, this will be a steady flow? So I get that. So I am interested in knowing what will happen from there. So I think we've covered that part of it. That's all I had at this point, question or concern to address.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Thank you for the study.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So I've just got a few comments. You know, this proposed residential development addresses several of the elements that were identified in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. Contrary to what you may read on social media, the Comprehensive Plan was a planned document adopted by city council after a substantial, and I believe it was 18 months, amount of time, community involvement, and input from all stakeholders in the community. So it wasn't just something that was driven by staff, by council. There was a Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee that worked on that process for the better part of 18 months. This proposed residential development also complies with our future land use map, which identifies this property as low-density residential. Again, there's been some miscommunication and misunderstanding about what low-density residential means in our code. And all four of our RSF 1, 2, 3, and 4, our single-family residential zoning codes, are low-density residential by code. So this was designated as low-density residential, and the proposal meets that requirement. Only our multifamily residential is high-density under our, under our city code, and there's no multifamily residential proposed here. Additional residential growth and opportunities will also make progress towards challenges that have been identified in our 2024 downtown market study. We hear constantly that residents want more commercial and retail options in Van Dalia. However, our current residential housing stock, our median household incomes, and our population are all current challenges to attracting and retaining certain types of businesses in our community. And so this, part of this growth, you know, the, the finishing out of the Foxfire neighborhood, the condo development going in on, in the infill lot, the old Willow Pool site, those are all things where we are trying to address some of the items that have been brought up in the Comprehensive Plan and in our downtown market study. This proposed residential development is quite similar to very successful single-family residential developments in our neighboring cities of Brookville, Clayton, Inglewood, and Tip City, to name a few, some of which, but not all of them, are being built by Arbor Homes. The price points are comparable, and the residential developments are building out because there is a current demand for these type of homes, lot sizes, and at the prices being offered. Much like the current Section 9 of Foxfire, which already has eight building permits issued, these homes are desirable. And in my opinion, based on the history of the Foxfire development, there is no longer a market in Van Dalia to build larger, custom homes like Foxfire. And there hasn't been for several years. Sure, the homes in Foxfire typically sell very quickly, so there's arguably a demand for those homes. However, building similar-sized homes and styles at today's cost would be every bit north of $500,000 to $750,000 for some of the homes in Foxfire. And if there was a market demand for that in Van Dalia, Foxfire would have already been completed, and we wouldn't be sitting here 25, 26 years later with lots undeveloped in Foxfire. And when the opportunity arose a couple years ago, a custom home builder probably would have bought the remaining 22 acres in Foxfire to build custom homes. But that didn't happen because there hasn't been a demand for that. This PUD provides additional flexibility and control for the city, especially given the proposed multi-phase build-out of the development, four phases, each phase taking about 15 months. My primary concern with the initial RSF4 zoning request, or rezoning request, was that although the applicant wasn't proposing to build out the development to the highest possible density, once we approved the RSF4 zoning district, the city had less control if the developer or builder changed hands prior to completion, and another developer or builder could come in and ask to modify that and increase the density of that property. And I wasn't comfortable with that, even though that would have still been in accordance with the RSF4 zoning. The proposed PUD is 46% of the net density permitted under our residential PUD requirements, which is 2.75 dwelling units per acre. A substantial amount of existed wooded areas and green space is being left undisturbed by the proposed development at 46%, which exceeds the 15% our code requires. All the proposed roads, and I know this was brought up by some residents earlier, all of the proposed roads that are being, are being constructed to city standards. So these, the width of the right-of-way in the development is what we have required in almost all of our residential developments across the city. It's not, we're not holding them to a higher standard, and we're not holding them to a lower standard, including the wider 60-foot right-of-way at the entry points to the largest part of the development. So I know that there's some, there's some concerns about the finishes of the homes, the products of the homes, but I think, you know, Mr. Taylor spoke earlier, I've spoken prior, you know, we cannot keep saying no to development in Van Dalia. And when we do, we are going to find ourselves in similar situations that some of our neighboring cities are in. We have been told time and time again that our population in Van Dalia is stagnant, it's aging, and that's problematic for a city because we want to continue to provide quality services to our residents. That is financed primarily through our income tax receipts. And if we are not growing our business community in Van Dalia, and we are not growing our residential base in Van Dalia, that income tax money is not going to keep pace with our expenditures. So if we continue to say no to development in Van Dalia, whether it be residential or commercial, we are going to strap a future, future city council with some pretty hard decisions, and that is either going to be raising the income tax level and putting that out to the voters to increase our income tax rate, or cutting services dramatically, because that's where we are headed if we keep saying no to developments. So I support the development, I support, and I appreciate the support that, or the, that you have agreed to making the modifications that you have, you know, and I'm saying this, you know, to the people that are in the room, I'm saying this as a Foxfire resident. I live in Foxfire. When the original Section 8 and 9, you know, when I bought in Foxfire, I knew I was going to have homes built behind me at some point. I didn't go in there thinking that I was always going to look at a wooded lot behind me. Are the houses that are going in, I mean, I would love for the houses going in behind me to look exactly like mine and my neighbors, but the reality is, is no developer is going to come in and, right now, under current market conditions and what's been here for several years, going to come in and start a project that they're not going to be able to build out. I mean, I don't know a developer that is going to put out the money to, to build a home, a housing development that's going to take 25 years to build out. I mean, I'm not in the development business, but I don't think that's going to recoup your, your investment. So, you know, we have to be flexible to the changing market conditions, and I think that's, you know, members of this council several years ago, you know, we made some modifications to what was going to be in Foxfire Section 9 and 8, because the conditions changed. And we didn't have as much control over that because it wasn't a PUD. I mean, the zoning was already in place, so there wasn't as much control that we had there. But we have the option to have more control across the street here. I think we have exercised some of that control. It's not going to be everything that everybody wants, but I think we have to make a decision that is going to be appropriate housing options for what the community needs, which we are seeing in our neighboring communities, that this housing product is selling and, and developments are building out, and it's not taking 25 years to do so. So there is a need for these homes, and I'm, I'm supporting getting us to the point where we can provide these homes for our community, so.
Zero. I have a similar statement, and this is my opinion position on that, as in property development and PUD. And it's my conclusion to the matter that, you know, the requests of rezoning. I truly struggled with this in the last month or two, and I've heard comments from citizens and the developer and the planning commission, and I've taken all this information in. And thank you for all your emails and your comments, and I truly have read them, and I've heard your comments, and I hear your concerns. And I'm a person that takes this information, takes information, facts and figures, and makes decisions based on systematic approach. It's part of my job, by the scientific method, which brings me to the conclusion. I've defined the problem, collected the data, listened to all the parties involved, analyzed data, developed the hypothesis, tested the hypothesis. My conclusion will not be based, or is not going to be a popular one. No one will believe how serious I have taken this decision. I've certainly struggled with this, as I said, in the past two months. I also have to keep in mind what I believe is best for the entire city. That's why I'm here, because everybody in the city votes- That's why I'm here, because everybody in the city voted. There are other stakeholders involved and, and everybody here is a stakeholder as well. There's no doubt about that, but therefore I looked at the comprehensive plan as well. It guided me, it's a guide and a roadmap that's already been talked about and, you know, for the land use given the direction of all the citizenry has already been discussed. I feel my role in this matter has been similar to a judge. Judge needs to take a look at all the facts, leave the emotion out of it, personal or otherwise have the case. I already described how I did this above in rendering my decision with the evidence presented and with firsthand observation as well, so I have some experience that I'll relate here to in just a moment. I stand with the planning commission, agree with their findings to allow the property to develop with certain conditions perhaps that may be offered tonight as, as the PUD. I originally voted for it, did not vote for it as it sat. Coming back as a PUD does give us that control and I think that's what we're trying to do tonight in, in hearing some of your comments, is try to tweak that to make that better for, for all. In my opinion, the planning commission did their due diligence, researching and analyzing the code as well as taking staff's comments. The planning commission also applied and based their decision on scientific method for the PUD or systematic approach and as prescribed by protocol. I witnessed this firsthand because I attended the council meeting or the planning commission. I concluded that as well, that the 13 criteria that they voted on, the design standards, it's already been mentioned, that will meet the city code for those. We've already heard that the cul-de-sacs have been widened. In, in the comprehensive plan, it called, the community called for housing which turns, which in turn attracts and retains businesses, we've also heard tonight. One business owner has already come forward and, and talked about that. There is a younger market for this and that's where I think I originally kind of lost sight of this and this is all market driven. And the reason I'm, I'm going at this is because as I looked at one of these homes, it occurred to me, I, I've seen this before, and I realized it was my niece's house. They recently bought a house down in Loveland and it's a similar situation as this and it's ironic because there's a similar Foxfire plat across the street. Now, across the street is a four lane highway, mind you, but this plat is going in, it's 180 homes similar to this, has cul-de-sacs, now albeit it has a roundabout, this doesn't. But the point is that it's the same product. I don't, I don't remember what the builder is. It's the same size lot. This is what's going out. This is what's, what is out there. So they also have an anti-monotony. You go down the street and, we've been there twice, and I go looking and like, okay, I can't figure out which one it is, which one is it? Because they're, they are all different, so that works. They had the, the offer to buy the same size house, a four bedroom house, by a design builder, not a custom builder, but on a larger lot. And you know what they said was that they didn't want to, they wanted a smaller lot. They didn't want to maintain that lot. So, and they have two dogs and we go out onto their deck and it's not much bigger than this and the yard's right there. I couldn't do that, but that's what they want. That's what, everybody in that neighborhood is of their age and they're in the twenties and thirties. So it's interesting that, you know, this, I think this represents that same market, that same product. You know, so a third of it's been built out in two years. They have 300 square feet of screen space and that's the, the roundabout, so that's where they go to walk the dogs. This is all market driven, I understand that and my brother-in-law's a realtor of 25 years and I talked to him and he says, it sells, he sells high-end lots, homes, anywhere between 50,000 all the way up to 3 million. So there's quite a spread there, but what's interesting is that he said that unless you have $500,000 in your pocket, you're not going to get a custom home. This is the product that's out there. This is the product that, that younger folks want on a smaller lot. And so he sells about 10 of these type homes to about one of a custom home. And, you know, again, anywhere between 500,000 all the way up to a million. And I, and he's down in the Springboro area and, and of course that's, you know, exploding like crazy. But he too confirms that, you know, a lot of these homes are going in, the builders are building because the companies are nearby, want to have those rooftops, have those people work for them and vice versa. So this all makes sense and he also stated that in his, in his experience and observation that the existing homes in the area across from something like this product go up by And that's just the fact of life. I mean, so Foxfire's values will go up 10%. He also said that he's excited to know that this product will, or could exist because he also has heard, you know, he knows that Vandelia is a, is a difficult market to be in, to get families into Vandelia area. Sometimes he has to go to Tipp to, to provide that for him. And I know these are not low-income houses and, you know, the younger can't really afford it, but somehow my niece did and her husband, you know, they have two jobs. If they lose their job, they probably lose their house, but that's, you know, that's to show they want this product. They, they, if they can afford it, they, they get it. So I, you know, when I hear the quality, I, I don't know, again, going back to the vinyl is, you know, $350,000 to $500,000. At what point do we start making sure we have the right material on it to make it that quality? That is my only quandary, but otherwise, you know, these, these aren't cheap. Her house, my niece's house is built about the same as mine and I've, I've got a 25 or a 30-year-old home, albeit it's brick, but they do have some natural product on the front. They have stone, brick, and then up above, they have the wood cladding and vinyl on the side and albeit that it is the, the more dense, okay? When it comes to other public services, we have, the fire department has no problem with it, they've looked at it, minimal challenges with the schools and actually a financial benefit. The police division said there wouldn't be any kind of burden. The housing design criteria, I've already gone over that, so I won't belabor that. Other than I traveled Traybine Road and there's five areas or plats going in similar to this. Now, one of them is a custom home plat, but they're $500,000 and more and that may be what somebody had spoke to earlier off of Traybine in Beaver Creek. But when I go by there, that's building out quick. Now, the homes look very similar to this, to, to the product. And to me, I, I haven't driven back in there, but from the street curb appeal, they, they look fine. I don't know that that would be, as they would say, cheap or not quality. The, you're going to follow all the PUD, we talked about the vinyl a little bit ago. Traffic, I, I concur. Again, going back to that traffic study, we just kind of covered that already. What's interesting is that I wanted to experience what you've experienced in, in your area. So other than driving by occasionally, two times a week, on the weekend, whatever, I wanted to make sure that I was there during business, business hours or busy times. So I've been there four times, driving through Foxfire Trail and coming out then Deerhurst. Two times in the morning, one at 7:30 in the morning on Monday and 8:00 AM on Tuesday. I did see quite a bit of traffic, but I didn't wait more than a minute. There were several cars in front of me. There are, there is a lot of traffic, no doubt about that. And so I'm sure this vary, I'm sure this varies from time to time. Then I wanted to do that in the afternoon for the busy times. So I ventured out in the afternoon, 4:30 on a Wednesday and 5:00 PM on a Friday. Again, kind of the same situation. Other times I've been through there, it's very light. So I would say that it's, it's, there's a lot of traffic, but seem manageable. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I acknowledge and hear everything. I believe that we have the opportunity to develop in, with the advantage of this PUD and, you know, with conditions or other, that other council members might make. Several comments made by the citizens, you know, what if it was in your backyard? My answer is yes. I, I would welcome it in my neighborhood and I have. There's five other, or there's four other developments in my area off of Stone Quarry and Helkey. And I've seen those come in. I've seen them grow. I've seen them build out. Many of those homes have the same type of, of different design features, brick, vinyl, boards, wood boards, so ashberry farms, wood and meadows, you know, and that increased traffic in my area, Helkey and, and Stone Quarry. So I understand that. So would I buy one of these homes? I probably would, if I could afford it. So that's about where I'm at and there was a comment made about the downtown area for Vandelia. Some of you may or may not have heard about our Vandelia center city overlay and so that is a start to help better downtown and make Vandelia better, a better look, better walkability. So I think with some of these things coming forward, I think we have an opportunity here. So obviously I'm probably surprised I didn't get booed and cheered off this chair already, but I appreciate, appreciate your patience with my comments.
I, I would like to, I agree with, I agree with a few things that my other council members said, but I also want to point out that we, they talked about market driven. I agree it is, but it's also profit driven. People need to make a profit, sometimes a little bit less than proposed. I don't think anybody here expected Foxfire houses in their size or, or materials to be built in this development, but they do expect and have a right to expect, I think, from our code and, and our comprehensive plan, that there's a transition to the smaller houses and the smaller lots and not such a severe contrast. I don't know about you and I don't, truly don't care how fast the, the houses in Huber sell. I don't think that's what we want here in Vandelia. One more thing, I really do want something to happen here, but I want to point out, like I said earlier, you can find anything, but in, in our comp plan, it says a future development occurs, it will also be important to ensure neighborhoods retain a strong character with high-quality materials. And it also pointed out that significant housing growth in the city was not a priority for most survey respondents. So though I think we know it's a good thing and we feel that's important, we have an obligation to do it correctly and, and I don't think we're that far off. I know you said you can't do certain things. I'm sorry, I don't buy it, so.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you. And I don't want to belabor this point and I agree a lot with what's been set up here and I am definitely, as a real estate agent, I am pro-development. I would love to see more homes in our community, however, like Councilwoman Farce has mentioned, done in a responsible way. I want to go back to, you know, a couple of comments that Councilman Lewis was making and I just want to make sure that I understand correctly because I was writing some of this down as we were going. His condition on this, approving this would be that the surfaces or 70% at least would be brick, stone, or a natural cement type product. Does that, this is a question from Mr. Lewis, does that eliminate, you know, the hardy plaque, hardy plank or a cedar on gables?
Anything not vinyl.
Anything not vinyl. Okay.
If you give me a hardy board, okay, and if, and we can, amenable to the percentage. So if we say the three walls of the square are 60%, have to be brick and masonry of some sort and the other 40% can be hardy board. So maybe your second floor in a lot of homes is, are made out of wood and the, the lower floor is brick. That would be amenable, but I have to have, I'm, I don't want to approve this PUD as it's, as it stands. I also want to see this developed. I've, I'm, I've bought in, I, I'm not crazy about the, the higher density, but I do realize the marketability. I mean, much of what Councilman Folick said is, is true. And yes, Vandelia needs, we can't support, people want the bookstore, they want the little boutique coffee shop, they want a sit-down restaurant. We hear it all the time and have for years, but we are not developers and it's, it's an absolute fact that our demographics and the size of our city don't economically support those businesses. And if they would, we would all be putting a business in there to make money. So I do think this is, this is good for Vandelia, but I also understand that we want something that's a, a really decently quality thing here and, and that's what I'm driving at. I, I would love to find some, some common ground here for the applicant. But, so with that said, yes, yes.
All right. So you did answer your question. You answered my question, I guess I want just a little bit more clarity on what we're talking about. Again, you said 70% and the back can't be vinyl. If we're already saying that we want natural products on the front and sides.
Yeah.
Why aren't we saying we want natural products on the whole house?
Because I was trying, I was trying consciously to reduce the cost, yet it, make it palatable to the builder who's selling it. So I'm trying to upgrade the quality of the home, it faces the back and even if, you know, in 20, we have deterioration, it'll be to the rear of the, rear of the home, but not necessarily catastrophic to the neighborhood and thus I capitulated on the, the rear of the house.
That's my point. Okay.
I, I can't hear you, I'm, I'm sorry.
I said hardy, the hardy plank is not that much more expensive.
And it's not going to wave like vinyl.
So vinyl doesn't wave.
It does.
Incorrectly installed it waves.
Incorrectly installed and old vinyl does wave, but we are, we are in a different time and we are providing for an upgraded thickness of vinyl that is, it is as good as hardy or a hard, hard material. Now, we've, this, these are studies, I mean, this isn't me, I'm happy to provide these studies and, and, and we know this because I, we've studied this and the building material manufacturers, they all produce this, this, these studies. So, but I'm, there, there's a debate over what is considered quality and not and, and I'm not going to win that debate. One, one person may think something is high quality and another person may think something else is high quality. And, and therefore I haven't said anything about many of the homes, many of the homes in Foxfire. I'm pointing up here because there are some photographs at the end of our, this presentation where there are many homes in Foxfire with zero brick and, and there are many, many homes...
Please have respect for the speaker, please no more comments, okay?
I have photographs, I'm happy to, if you'd like to put them up there, that have brick on the front and vinyl on the side. And so everybody wants what they want, customers, buyers, they, they decide their, their material choices and all of the pictures that I've shown, or not all, the majority of the pictures that I've shown have a natural material on the front, very similar to what's over in Foxfire. And so you, one of you asked a question, how much more? The answer is, these homes are very expensive today. That is the reality of the world that we live in and every dollar that is added to it makes it more difficult to sell. So it's not a question of how So it's not a question of how much more is it? There is a point where it becomes unmarketable. And I'm not Arbor, so I can't speak to the exact detail of what point does it happen? I just know that, and not a development that we're doing, and we're doing them all over Ohio, have we committed to anything more than 20% natural materials on the front of a home? You can't afford to build it. And if you want a development to be built, I'm just telling you, it's not, if it's not me, no one else, as someone said, is coming in here and building custom homes and taking 25 to 30 years to build here. This is as good as it's been in my 22-year career, the housing market. And the housing market has, has told us what buyers want. And so I, I just have to draw you to the pictures here, the brick materials, and we can make some commitments, and I don't even know what exactly I can commit before Arbor says, "I can't build that." But we, we cannot commit to the brick all around the sides. I can tell you that. That is a, that is a non-starter. We just can't build these homes here. Can't build them anywhere, frankly. We're building them in all over Columbus, Northeast Ohio. So, and if you don't mind going a few pages towards the end, just some photo, are you, are you running it? Oh, no, I'm in the back. I mean, there just happen to be some photos. So I'm not, there's a lot of houses in Foxfire.
I think the photos you're looking for are not in this.
They're not in this one?
This is your slide deck from.
Oh.
This is from your present.
I don't know. There's been a few different presentations, but anyway, you've driven through it. I, I think you've seen it. I, I know you know that there are home, many homes throughout Foxfire that are as.
Can you tell me what the best solution you have for my problem? What, what can you do as it relates to the facade of these homes?
Well, we, we've said it in the, in the, pardon me, in the Arbor, in the presentation that we've included, the community features include a minimum of brick wainscote on the front elevations, additional brick at the customer's options per standard elevations, siding materials will be fiber cement, wood, and vinyl siding. And vinyl siding will be upgraded to .044 thickness. I don't know the warranties on that, but that is the upgraded vinyl siding that has, I don't know if it's 27, it's a 25 or 30. Oh, thank you. I mean, we, we put a sample of photos. We have lots of photos.
A lot of trees.
And these are photos of, of homes we're proposing.
Okay.
And so.
Question. On those homes, back this one, the one that has.
Microphone, microphone.
I'm sorry. The one that has the brick facade.
Bottom left.
On the bot, yeah, bottom left. That's standard? And the other on the top right, is that a, driven by the customer? The addition of the face?
Generally, yes. We, almost, I mean, I, Arbor told me this week when I asked them, that all of their homes will have a brick wainscoting across the front, some kind of brick, not necessarily brick, stone, some, some natural material. And then they add as they go, and it is truly an affordability issue. And at some point, they say, "I can't afford that in my, in my home," or, "I want an upgraded interior," or "an upgraded patio." So, yeah, the answer's yes.
The minimum requirement is that.
Brick, the wainscoting across the front.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, please, Councilmember first.
Please.
Councilmember first. Those are, the pictures there are existing Foxfire homes.
Yes, I, I just.
Those aren't the proposed ones.
I think we're just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, those are, those are existing Foxfires, so just to be clear. But I was just, your question was, I think, around the.
Yes.
The brick. And so if you went to, back to the next page, or to the other photos of the Arbor homes, thank you, you can see that across these.
Okay.
Every, every one on here, except for, I think, the top right, oh, no, that has a stone as well. So that's just a light-colored stone, half-stone on them. And, and I know Arbor's willing to, to do that. I mean, the buyers want that. So I believe that that is a commitment we, we've made.
Does anyone have any more?
I'm trying to figure out how to write that.
Questions, comments that we need to add? I think we've. Exhausted a lot of this, so.
I'm not, no. I think we can do more.
All right. So at this time, can I have a motion on ordinance 25-02?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2502 in the second reading with the amendments to the architectural standards as follows. H, that those lots located along South Brown School Road, lots 31 to 35, and 119 to 126 inclusive, will be limited to dwelling units of 2,000 square feet and larger. I, no dwelling units with the same elevation or exterior color package shall be permitted on either side of each other and directly across the street from each other. And under other standards. D, an adequate landscape buffer consistent with Chapter 1232 of the zoning code shall be provided between the rear yards of lots 31 to 35 and lots 119 to 126 inclusive and South, and South Brown School Road.
I will, would like to further amend.
Correct.
I would like to reiterate that the, the approval for the final plan, that this traffic, the traffic study be completed by the city code and any requirements from the traffic study be addressed as part of the final development plan and to the extent approved by the city's traffic engineering consulting firm. And further, that we would mandate at least 25% or more of the home be constructed of a hard-fixed brick or stone. And, what is it, concrete brick, providing it meets the same standard for construction as typical hard-fired clay brick. Stone includes natural granite, limestone, slate, granite, river rock, or other similar stone typically used in exterior construction. I think the need for the amendment, among others, is to help ensure that the buildings, as proposed, have sufficient architectural variety and exterior surface elements to visually unify the development. And that's the main purpose for that particular amendment.
Mr. Folick, since you made the amendment originally as amended, you would need to, we have two different kinds of things there. So either you would accept his two additional conditions as part of your motion, or we just have to act on what your motion was alone.
I will accept Councilmember Lewis's motion.
Okay.
Amendment to the motion.
So that the motion is to approve, subject to the changes to Section H there, the 2,000 square foot change, which I think you, you had mentioned you were okay with that originally at the beginning.
I, I thought we said two-story.
Well, all the two stories are.
Are 2,000, is that what they are? Okay, no problem. I didn't know, that's what I didn't know.
I was just trying to explain.
Okay.
Motion is what it is.
Based on the elevations that were presented.
Right. The next one was the changing of the word "and" to "or" with respect to the anti-monotony section. The other one was the adequate buffering. The fourth one was the traffic study be completed and complied with before, as part incorporated into the final development plan. And then the last one, and I'm sorry, I'm a little fuzzy on the requirement. I know you said 25% of, is that the whole house, or is that?
Of, of the home, 25% or more of the home.
Of the entire home?
No.
It's not, it's not, it's not going to get built. It's not going to get built. We can commit to the frontage, but we can't commit to the whole thing. People can add, especially on a home where you can't see from the side.
We're in our vote now.
The three, three sides be, be 25% or more and no vinyl allowed.
Well, that was.
You can use hardy board.
That wasn't the original.
Right. That's a difference.
That was not the original.
No, it was not.
Are you okay with it?
No, I don't, I, no.
So I just need somebody to make a motion of some sort to be voted on, or, I mean, whoops, sorry, or work out some acceptable conditions or something.
I, I mean, I, I believe, you know, we're to the point that if, if we aren't going to acknowledge the fact that the current market in the greater Dayton area is, is the product that's being proposed, the market that's demanding the product that's being proposed, which, without putting so many restrictions on it that it prices it out of the builder's ability to do so and people to afford them, then, you know, the development is not going to move forward, which I know some people want. But this is another instance of we are sending the message that Vandelia is not open for It is true.
25% on three sides and you don't want the vinyl? Prohibition?
The builder, I mean, 25% on three sides is a significant price, price increase.
And he can't do the vinyl. He, he has to have the vinyl.
It's prohibited in my subdivision. It's prohibited in my subdivision.
Mine too.
Which were built 25 years ago.
And when they replace, they replace with the other.
Well, at this point, I mean, I'll accept his, I mean, I know where this is going, so I'll accept his, his.
Why don't you remake the motion in summary?
We'll move to approve ordinance 2502 in the second reading with the amendments for Section H to 2,000 square feet, Section I to change the word "and" to "or," an addition of Section D for adequate landscape buffering consistent with Chapter 1232 of the zoning code, and Mr. Lewis's amendments that a traffic study be completed with recommendations implemented prior to the final development plan, and.
And 25% of the three sides of the home be of brick or stone construction or concrete, whatever processed.
And then no one.
And that the remaining house be constructed of hardy board or other products other than vinyl siding.
That's the motion? That's the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan.
I just, can I just say one thing? The project will, is dead. It will die. I'm just telling you right now, this will, this will not get built.
Please refrain.
And we have, we have.
Audience, please stop.
We have spent a lot of time and come a long way on this. And after the examples we've talked about across the street, and all of the things we've talked about, knowing that if that is a requirement, that these homes won't get built, that you're putting it in there, I, I just, I just don't understand how we could come this far and that, that would happen, Councilman. And I, I don't know if, if that's a. I mean, I mean, even the 25% around three sides, I, as I mentioned, I, I'm not so sure that works, but I, I think we can probably make that work, but to not allow vinyl.
That's enough vinyl.
And when you have a development across the street that, and I wish I had the counts. Do you know how many, did you have an account, any of the houses?
Not concerned about their development, nor do I think this development is going to affect the prices.
That have vinyl? I mean, it just, it just, it just doesn't seem, and I'll use the word "fair" because of what is across the street, after all the concessions we've made.
Okay. We're going to move on.
We have a motion and second, and so.
I have a motion and a second.
I would just, okay, nothing.
Sure.
Yep, I'll, I'll wait till after the vote, and if anything needs to be said, I'll say. Thank you.
All right. Real quickly, are there any other comments or questions from council before we call the roll? All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
No.
Councilmember Fars.
No.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver. Councilmember Dugan.
No.
Vice Mayor Blakesley. Mayor Herbst.
No, and the motion passes six, one.
Fail six, one, I'm sorry.
Well, here's the problem that we have. Council either approves, denies, or approves with conditions, and we had the vote to approve with conditions that didn't fail. So I'm not sure if there's any, we, I don't know that, that killed the issue.
So it was approved with, with.
It was, it was, no, it was not approved. It failed. So we have not approved it, we have not approved it with conditions, and we have not denied it. So it's still on the table.
I mean, I thought you were, you were approving with conditions, am I not?
Well, that's what the motion was, but it failed.
So you put all the conditions in and then didn't approve? Is that what you're saying?
The vinyls. The vinyl.
Vinyl?
Well, no. What happened is, they made a motion to approve with five conditions. That motion failed. So what happened is, they have not approved it, they have not denied it, and they have not approved it with the mission.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry. I wanted to understand. Pardon me for interrupting.
Right now, they only have three options, and they haven't met any one of the three yet, and so we're back. We can't go, no, it doesn't go back down planning commission, no. Yeah. It's here.
Mr. Law Director.
Yep.
Am I permitted to make another motion since I made the first one?
Anybody can make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2502 in the second reading with the amendments to the architectural standards as follows. Section H to increase to 2,000 square feet or larger, Section I, change the word "and" to "or," the addition, under other standards, of Section D, an adequate landscape buffer consistent with Chapter 1232 of the zoning code, and the completion of a traffic study prior, and implementation of changes prior to the approval of the final development plan, and the incorporation of a brick, stone.
25%.
25%.
Of the three sides.
Of the three sides.
Facing the street.
And that's my motion. Nothing further.
No vinyl, right?
Second.
I'm not, no, I'm not. So I'm clear, I'm not putting a restriction that there be no vinyl on the property.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve ordinance 25-02 with the conditions noted by Councilman Folick. Most specifically, he has removed the "no vinyl" clause from the previous motion where there was the confusion. Are there any questions before we call the roll?
The vinyl's out, right?
Mike Blakesley.
I mean, it's, it's.
It would be permitted. Under the current, under the current motion.
Under the current motion, vinyl would be permitted.
And I do point out, well, let me ask a question, Mr. Hammett, if I can ask, just for clarification. There was a mention about a type of vinyl, like a minimum vinyl type of thing. Is that part of the?
That's already in the condition.
That's in the conditions already. So that, that.
Yes. Sorry, I'm going to barge right past you. The siding materials rule is Item D under Section 3 of Exhibit B, which is the architectural standards.
Perfect. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a. Perfect, okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a promise, that it was actually something that was in the, in the.
In the condition.
In the conditions, and it is, so I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't clear.
That, that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the standard for vinyl is, is already in the ordinance as proposed.
Perfect, okay.
The brick rule that, that was suggested in the motion, I'm, would that be a replacement for item C for the minimum br, instead, instead of minimum brick wainscot, that is replaced with the twenty-five percent brick rule, which is comparable to what the wainscot is anyway? Is, is that what I'm hearing? I'm getting a nod, potentially, okay.
On three sides.
On three sides.
Yeah, it's twenty-five percent on three sides.
Three sides.
Okay, so that would replace, yeah, this, and then the traffic study rule would be in item E under other standards.
Well, yeah, that's just a condition, yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the exhibit, that is a condition of the approval.
Gotcha, okay.
But yes, it is a requirement.
Does that make sense? All right, cool.
All right, thank you. So there's, again, no more comments or questions, and we're ready to call the roll.
Correct.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Lewis.
No.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
No.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes four, three.
Five, two.
Five, two, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, we have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, we've got the civil service meeting minutes of December fifth, along with the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of December eleventh, are there comments or questions regarding those? Being none, we'll move on to council comments, and we will begin this evening with Mr. McDonald. All right, Mr. Cron.
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Avalotus Weaver.
Just because I don't know if we need to, do we need to excuse Cindy from the study session?
No.
No? Okay, I didn't know if that was a procedural thing?
All right, council, please.
I'm not done, I still have a couple of things. A few of us got to attend the employee appreciation luncheon, and I just wanted to say thank you, I know that Cory got to do some of their remarks and they were very nice, and thank you to all of the longevity of many of our employees that have been here a long time, we appreciate all the hard work. I do appreciate also all the work that everybody did tonight on our two and a half hour meeting on this, this was a very hard decision, and I thankful that we were able to get this done. I know not everybody's happy, but I think that we came a long way, and it was, it's going to be good for the community, we do need housing, and I'm happy that we got here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Farce.
Nothing more this evening, thank you though.
Thank you, really, thank you. Council, Councilmember Folick.
Just two things real quick, one, again, to Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver, the employee service awards last Friday, ten city employees were recognized for a combined hundred and fifty-five years of service, and I, which is outstanding, I wanted to highlight that we had two twenty-five-year employee recipients, which were Chad Baughman in the DES department and Kristen Karns in the finance department, so congratulations to all the employees, and then also, as news broke today, congratulations to Captain Suker on his appointment as our next police chief, starting in May, so congratulations.
All right, Councilmember Lewis.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Dugan.
Nothing, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Blakesley.
I echo all the sentiments and kudos to the, to all the employees with all the number of years that they have put in and a lot of longevity, they're the unsung heroes, and we're, the city is a service organization, and the, the service that we provide is, is top-notch, as we say, top-tier, and I don't think we could compare to, nobody could compare, I think, to us, and maybe I'll hold bias, but I think we have such a quality of, of employees and dedicated employees, and it's greatly appreciated, that's all I have.
All right, the only thing I wanted to say is what has already been mentioned is, again, congratulations to our employees that we honored here last week, and also like to congratulate Captain Suker on his recent appointment to our future police chief of Vandalia, we're looking forward to serving with you, and again, congratulations. I'd like to thank all the members of the community that came out to speak tonight and on the previous meetings on the items that we, we struggle and go back and forth on ourselves, we appreciate hearing from everyone, and that's what makes the system work so well here, so again, that's all I have, this meeting is adjourned after two hours and thirty-five minutes.